I'd like to call this January 20, 13th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. And we're gonna start doing this every month, take a picture so everybody can see how much we've changed from month to month. Ask Ms. Page if she will lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come to you in the sweet and most humble name of Jesus. Dear God, we come and invite you into this meeting, Lord. We ask that everything that we do, it will be done in decency and order, and that it will be pleasing to you, that you will get all the glory and all the honor for it. Lord God, we pray this evening for every resident of New Kent County. We pray, Lord God, for your guidance in making decisions that will influence and there will aid and assist each and every resident. Father God, we thank you and we bless your name, and these are all blessings we ask in your mighty name, say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you.
And for the last time, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
All right, at this time, we're gonna start our annual organization of the Board, and I'm gonna turn this meeting over to Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This time, we will open the floor for nominations for the Chair of the New Kent County Board of Supervisors to serve a term of one year.
Mr. Hathaway, I nominate Patricia Page for Chair of the New Kent Board of Supervisors for a one-year term.
All right, we have a nomination for Mrs. Patricia Page. Is there a motion to close nominations for Chair?
Mr. Hathaway, I move to close nominations for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
At this time, there is, nomination has been made and closed for Mrs. Patricia Page to serve a term of one year as the New Kent County Board of Supervisors. At this time, I'll accept a motion to elect a Chair.
Mr. Hathaway, I move to elect Patricia Page as Chair of the New Kent County Board of Supervisors for a one-year term.
All right, well, we have a motion to elect, is there any discussion? Ms. Watkins, may we have a vote?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Mr. Tiller? Mr. Tiller, on behalf of the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, your coworkers, as I call us, we thank you for your diligent leadership, we thank you for your character, and Mr. Tiller, we thank you for just leading us, knowing that you went through a year of caregiving, instead of caregiver, going through all the things that you've gone through in your life, and you still led us with character and dignity, and we appreciate you and we thank you. And this is to see Thomas Tiller Jr., 2019 Chairman, New Kent County Board of Supervisors, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not giving a speech.
Okay, now we will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chairman.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Evelyn for Vice Chair to serve a one-year term.
Are there any other nominations? Can we have a motion to close the nominations for Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I move to close the nominations for Vice Chair.
Can we have a motion to elect the Vice Chairman?
Move to elect, as Vice Chair, Mr. Evelyn.
Ms. Watkins, oh, Ms. Watkins, will you call for the vote on a motion to elect Vice Chairman?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Stand.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Evelyn's Vice Chairman for the term of one year. And now we have, we need a motion for, to elect Mr. Rodney Hathaway as Clerk of the Board, and Ms. Wanda F. Watkins as Deputy Clerk of the Board, each to serve a term of one year.
Madam Chair, I move to elect Rodney Hathaway as Clerk of the Board, and Wanda Watkins as Deputy Clerk of the Board to serve a one-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn, is there any discussion? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the Board, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Hathaway and Ms. Watkins. And now, we have annual organization, okay, we have our, our meeting schedule, Resolution R-01-20, which is our annual meeting schedule for the Board of Supervisors, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, the July 13th meeting, if we could reschedule that meeting?
We'd like to check out your calendars to see alternate date for July 13th, 2020.
I'm good for the 14th, I could do the next day.
Okay. July the 14th is a Tuesday. Mrs. Steers, Mr. Tiller?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Are there any more changes? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the proposed meeting schedule with the changes made.
Okay, a motion's been made to adopt Resolution R-01-20 with the noted changes of July the 14th instead of July 13th. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the Board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Now, we have the review and adoption of our bylaws. If there are no changes, do we have a motion?
Don't you have to hold those for 30 days before you can adopt them? Unless there's no changes?
Yep. Madam Chair, it's only if there's changes do you have to wait 30 days.
Are there any changes?
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
I move that the bylaws be adopted as presented.
Ms. Watkins, we have a motion to, for the bylaws, would you poll the Board, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Okay, now, we have, next on our agenda, the consent agenda. And the first, yeah. There are a couple of things in the consent agenda, if I may bring to your attention. One is resolution for William R. Davis Jr., which is Resolution R-03-20, and it is for his years of service on the Board of Supervisors. And the other one is for Eugene R. Williams, and Eugene Williams served on our Economic Development Authority, and it is Resolution R-04-20, which expresses our appreciation for his service and his dedication. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record.
We have a motion, Ms. Watkins, will you poll the Board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. All right, at this time, we have our small business close-up, Mr. Matt Smolnick.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Matthew Smolnick, your Director of Economic Development for the county, wouldn't be fitting if I didn't have a hot cup of coffee in my hand before I introduce my next guest, Seth Westerman, Bugle Call Coffee, he's the master roaster. Bugle Call Coffee is a newer venture here in the county, one of the owners, Mr. Montgomery, came to my office probably, I don't know, five months ago, we sat and chatted, and we actually used Bugle Call Coffee for our gifts that we sent out from Economic Development and County Administration. And I tell you, I got a lot of calls from out of state saying, "Matt, that's pretty cool, you guys have a coffee roaster here," so we figured what better way to kick off the year than to have Seth here to talk about the business. So, come on up, buddy.
How you guys doing?
Good evening.
Yeah, so, just wanna start out by saying thank you to the Board and Mr. Smolnick here for inviting us here. Like you said, we're Bugle Call Coffee, we started up in August of this year, we've been, we started out with doing some farmers' markets, and we did the New Kent Farmers Market and the Colonial Kitchen Farmers Market, some other little gigs like that, and since then, we've been able to open up our doors and do some cafe hours in the mornings. So, yeah, so, Bugle Call Coffee, as you can tell from the name, we're military affiliated, like you were saying, Jack, he's, you know, my buddy since we were seven years old, he's in the Army right now, and him and his wife are the owners, along with myself, so we're, you know, trying to do everything we can to give back to the military community. We, every month, we partner with a new military company to kinda share each other's social medias and kinda just bolster up each other, just kinda make a, sort of a community where we can rely on each other there. So, for Bugle Call Coffee, we figure, you know, no matter whether you're a soldier, or whether you're a parent, or whatever you do, you have your own morning formation, so we, I would just like, really like to be a part of that, you figure we can help you, help you get up and get your day going. So, like you said, we've got our military partners, we also work with the Gary Sinise Foundation, I don't know if you know, he's Lieutenant Dan, he does a lot of really, really great stuff for wounded vets that come back, he builds a lot of houses and things like that. So, yeah, so, we, like I said, for Bugle Call, we roast everything just down the road, down 249, if you know, Whole Family Donuts, we're right next to them, so we, you know, get coffee straight from other countries, from farms, and roast them from the green beans to what you know as your coffee beans, and, you know, we're working real hard on getting, getting new offerings as, you know, often as we can. If you haven't already, grab yourself a cup, we've got a decaf and a Zambian coffee, if you've never had one of those before, back in the back there. So, yeah, so, we, you know, do a lot of online sales and trying to get into some wholesale, and, you know, we're starting to get into a few cafes, so, but it's been really, really great to be in New Kent. I'm personally on, just on the other side of the Henry Rico line, but I've grown up, you know, here all my life, so I'm really glad to be here. And we spend a lot of our time trying to work with other New Kent businesses, Doug Beck here with Cafe To Go, he's in with us with our cafe hours, so he's got a mobile cafe truck, so during the wintertime, he's hanging out with us and we're able to sort of help each other out there. And also, we serve Joe with Semper Pie Pastrina, I don't know if you've heard of him, he's at the New Kent Market, we, you know, serve his pastries every morning, so we're really just trying to, you know, link in with other New Kent businesses and help each other out. So, basically, you know, we're just trying to use coffee to bring New Kent together. If you haven't come and seen us yet, we're open on Mondays and Tuesdays mornings, 6:30 to 10:30, grab yourself a cup, free cups for first responders and our cops and everybody, we, you know, obviously, be real supportive of them, and then we've got a couple of educational events coming up, we've got one this upcoming, on the 25th, that's sort of just looking at some different Columbias, that'll be at our place, right next to Whole Family, and then another one at Gautier Winery, just in Barrensville. So, yeah, so, we're just, you know, again, thank you guys for having us, featuring us, we're really, really glad to get started and look forward to some business in the future. And I got some mugs for our board members, figured I gotta spread the merch around, get some brand recognition.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Monday and Tuesday, are those the only days you serve coffee?
Yeah, so, we're just doing Monday and Tuesday, Whole Family Donuts, they're closed Monday and Tuesday, but open every other day, and they serve our coffee every morning as well, as well as pound bags, so we're just gonna, again, trying to not stubble on their toes, kind of coexist, but so far, it's been, it's been going really well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. One thing that's unique is Cafe To Go has coffee, but the two coffee, the two businesses are working together, and so, and if you've never had pastries that the baker makes, you're missing out on a treat, so anyway, but anyway, we thank you for being here. At this time, we will have our citizens' comment period. And no one signed up, so we will now close our citizens' comment period. We will now have our residents' administrators' report.
Members of the Board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall Wynn with BDOT, this past month, we've had 62 work orders, we've completed 166. We've done our normal maintenance activities through the month, luckily, we haven't had any snow to speak of, which is a good thing, we might have a little spit this weekend, hope not, so, it'd be good for us. Couple of items on the pending studies, a couple of these things got mixed up, but Mount Olivet, Church Road 618, there was a safety study done, signs are being ordered, these are not advisory, these are not regulatory signs, advisory signs, curb warning signs, that sort of thing. They've been ordered, and once we get them in, we will be installing them. Study on 620, Mount Hope, I mean, Good Hope Road, that's a speed study, still working through that one, we have another study at Carriage Road where there was a missing school bus stop a hand sign, that's been installed, and we have some advisory signs that will be placed on that roadway as well. The Route 106, Burrell, I mean Jimmy Burrell Lane, that sign is still on order, it's a special-made sign, as soon as we get it in, that's where the turn lane is on 106, we're gonna put some safe hits out there to block off that turn lane, so people won't turn in there, as soon as we get the sign, we'll be able to install everything.
Looks like you put a little something up there after our last meeting to block it off a little bit, that did help a little bit.
There was a pipe through barricades that somebody put up, I'm not sure who put it up, but as I understand it, they're working in that area right now.
Yeah, they are working in that, yeah.
Working in that area.
But anyway, the week after our meeting, something went up, that did help, because they were turning there.
Yeah, the pipe through barricades.
Thank you for that.
They will stop that, so. A couple other things, I know y'all know about the deck replacement, you know, on 155, that's been pushed back to June of 2020. Williamsburg Road, where the paving has been done, they were supposed to finish the guardrail today, I'm not sure exactly, I'm not exactly sure if they've completed that. There was about a half a day's work left, from what I heard from the construction engineer this morning at our staff meeting. Only other item that I want to bring up, Marketplace, we do have a signal warrant study underway now at that intersection, and as soon as we get all that information, I'll be forwarding it on to Mr. Hathaway. So, with that, y'all have any questions?
Supervisor Lockwood, do you have any questions?
I do. Can I request a speed study now?
Sure.
Okay, in Barrensville, on Route 30, I'd like to see the speed limit dropped to 45. That part is, begins in James Tiggie County, just before Barnes Road, where the road goes from four lanes to two, I'd like to see the whole stretch 45, but I'm not gonna push my luck on my first day, so I'd like to see it from that point where it goes down to two lanes, at least through Mount Nebo Road, there's a lot of activity in that area, and with all the trucks and everybody passing through there, all the people attempting to turn, it is turned into a very dangerous road. And I'd also like to go ahead and get together with you and get an update on the dam crossing at Godden's Pond, and see where we stand on that, I know we, I've heard some of the options presented, but I haven't heard any real concrete plan at this point.
I haven't heard any plan on that yet either, I need to get with Bridge on that one myself.
And then there's, the other road that's closed down in, off of the extension of Tabernacle and Holly Forks, where where the pond is closed, was washed out.
Right into county line.
Yeah, right into county line, that's been closed for a number of years, we still have temporary signs up that are, you know, know-through traffic and all that stuff, if you're not gonna open the road, then I don't think we need detour signs anymore, and I would like to see something done to see what it would take to open that road, I know that Stone House has done something to reinforce the dam, it looks to me like the only thing lacking is some pavement across the top to reopen that, so if you can, I don't know if that's your district or not, but...
No, it's, it's just on the, across the line, from what I understand.
Okay.
Last information I got, you know, it's a private dam.
Right.
And I can get some more information, I'll email you, okay?
Okay, I'll follow up with the email, too.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Steers?
Yes, thank you. Last Wednesday, we had the Transportation Safety Commission meeting, there were 30 items discussed, and the Commission has asked me to bring this to your attention, there are four items, one you just discussed, and that was the red light or the intersection of Mount, or Marketplace and Pocahontas Trail.
Right.
That's one. Another one that is very much needed is the North Courthouse, Kentland Trail Interstate Intersection there, especially at nighttime, raining and stuff, cars can't see, I mean, is there any way BDOT can install some type of street lights?
We don't, we don't install street lights, I mean, if you, if the county wants street lights, you can get a permit and have a contractor install them, but we don't, we don't install street lights.
Okay, so, something we'll have to take up later then.
Yes, if you'd like for me to get pricing, sorry. If you'd like for me to get pricing on that, to bring back to you, I can do that.
Is that okay with the Board? Okay, if you do that. And then, there's been several speed studies at South Quaker Road, Sheriff of Glockland has requested multiple speed studies, this roadway is extremely narrow, west of North Impact Road, Route 665 to Dispatch Road, 613. The roadway has drainage issues in the areas with the white edge line pavement markings have collapsed and fallen into the ditch, and in some areas, there are no shoulder, and if a vehicle runs off the roadway, they're in approximately 12 inches deep water, or in a deep ditch. So, we even suggested that we would meet with you out there to walk that, to go through that, so you know exactly where this is, if that would be acceptable.
It's fine with me. I think we've done, you know, some speed studies out there, and I can, I can pull, you know, what Traffic Engineering sent us.
And I think what's gonna, what's gonna have to happen sooner or later is the roads are gonna have to widen, I mean, if the road's crumbling into the ditch, you know, so I don't know if you have...
I'll look at the, if I remember right, I don't think we have but 30 feet of right away on that stretch of road.
Okay, but...
We're constrained by the right away we have.
Okay.
Mr. Steers? On that, on that...
On that road right there, is that, is that where the, that's gonna be where the school is gonna be traveling, right, is that correct? Is there any plans to upgrade on, on the, is there any plan to upgrade that road, anybody, 'cause of the school?
No plan for BDOT.
I'm sorry, we're talking about Quaker Road, part of the elementary school plan does call for turn lanes to be installed, right at the entrance onto the property, but there are no other additional plans to either widen or improve the remainder of the road.
Okay, thank you, and that's it. Oh, and I did want to tell you that we got to meet, excuse me, Mr. Joe Terry?
Yes.
The Superintendent, very impressive, even though he didn't know a lot about the community, because he's new, but he was, seemed to be very willing and capable of helping us with our projects and...
I hated to put him in that situation, but I had another meeting I had to go to.
That's okay, well, he did a great job, we didn't really miss it, I'm sorry. He did, no, I'm just kidding, no, but it was nice to have some new blood, and, you know, with a great attitude, we appreciate it.
Mr. Steers?
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn?
I just have a comment, I guess, I know you've done a speed study on 249 roundabout in between...
I know you've done a speed study on two-fourty-nine roundabout in between six-twelve and towards Ricks, with, I guess with the new food line going on there, will there be another speed study done? I mean, that's still fifty-five from that, I'm not asking you to do another speed study, but, I mean...
I mean, probably, but once, once it gets developed, we can certainly do another study.
Because, I mean, common sense tells me that should be forty-five from that roundabout to Ricks, I mean, but, but, do you think that could be...
I mean, once, once the food line gets built, and it's actually, you know, people coming in and out of there, we could, we could do another speed study.
But you've done two or three speed studies in that area, I think.
Correct.
Right, okay. Just a comment, because I, I do hear a lot of complaints about that.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Tiller.
Just one, and it seems to be a reoccurring pothole on Pinehurst.
Okay.
Right there with the, I'm sorry. On Pinehurst, right there with the golf course.
Yeah.
It's like a pothole's come within a pothole, it's gotten a lot bigger.
Okay.
And I know they, they patched those potholes right there at that crossover, I don't even know how many times, in the past eight years, but I actually had two phone calls last week about the same place.
Okay, that's the one we've been discussing for a while, I'm sure.
Yes, and y'all fixed the last one, but this one is a little bit closer to Longview, but it's, it's a fairly large pothole now.
All right.
And the road's just crumbling there, as you've seen, and then like I did, I showed you further down Pinehurst.
Right.
And you can really see it two days after it rains, because you can still see all the wet lines in the road, where the moisture's coming up, so, that's all.
Okay. I'm, I want to think, I want to tell you how appreciative I am of the signs that you're putting on Oliver Church Road, and it's my understanding when the weather gets warm, we're gonna go back to the, the striping of the road.
Yeah, I've got, I've got Traffic Engineering, I'm gonna have them look at the rest of it, excuse me, because from where we left off, two-two-forty-nine, the road is wide enough. So, that, that is forthcoming.
Okay, thank you so much. Also, it's time for Clock Road again. We had several rains, and it's, in those same two areas where it washes out, it's washed out again, and the rest of the road is...
Washed away.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Pamonkey Church Road, potholes at both of the entrance, and also it's, it's washboard throughout there as well. And then on Ordinary Lane, we had an April, an apron issue, I think Mr. Hathaway was talking to you about that?
We looked at that.
Didn't you do that?
We looked at that, and Ordinary Lane is a private road, which is right on, you know, Point Dexter Road that we maintain. We don't, I mean, it's, it's up to the, the private owners of that roadway to take care of it.
To repair it up to the apron?
Up to the pavement, I would imagine.
Up to the edge of pavement, yeah.
Okay, okay. And, and then I'll be calling you, I have another road that wants to be brought into state maintenance, and so we'll need to talk about getting someone to talk to the residents about what they need to do.
Just send it there.
Try to get there. All right, so that's all I have.
One more thing, I'm sorry. Westbound sixty, where y'all stopped by yours little substation.
Correct.
With the repaving. There were a couple places where they marked, like they painted around the potholes or where the pavement was, are they gonna go back and fix those, or are they just anytime soon? Because they marked them, but they, that was right after where y'all...
From, from that point west, we'll be doing some maintenance work with their maintenance staff, where we have to cut out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's all, thank you so much, Mr. Wynn.
Okay.
At this time, we will have the elected officials' report. Mr. Lockwood.
I don't have anything.
Mrs. Steers.
I, I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Evelyn.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Tiller.
The only thing I'd like to do is welcome Mr. Lockwood to the board. It's your first official meeting, I know, so, again, we, we...
A pleasure to be here.
We look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Page, I do have one thing, I see three boys sitting out there in the audience, and I think they're in my son's advanced history class, am I correct, in Ms. Chisenhall's class? Y'all supposed to be here for extra credit? And my son's not, for some reason? So, I'd just like to welcome y'all, before you leave, I want y'all to come up here, so Ms. Chisenhall knows you came, and you take a picture in front of the boy, what do you think?
I too, Mr. Lockwood, and excuse my failure to welcome you in the very beginning of the meeting, but welcome to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, and we look forward to a very exciting term. And something else that I wanted to, to bring to the attention, and it was brought to my attention, and it's several incidents, and I had to write it down because I'm really emotional about this, but there were incidents that have made it on social media, and what really got my attention was that it was also on our local TV stations, and so I feel as a leader here at New Kent County that I have to address it. New Kent County, everybody knows I was born and raised here, and I love, love, love my home, but there's some things that I cannot tolerate, and there's activity that on the news station, they label our schools and our county as racist. I grew up in New Kent County, in a segregated New Kent County, and it is my feeling that no person, regardless to your age, regardless to your gender, your sexual preference, if you have abilities or disabilities, regardless to your race, no person has a right to bully, to intimidate, to instigate, or to torment, because you are not the same. You don't even have the right if you weren't born and raised here. And I feel that as a county, as a, everyone wants to say we're the second fastest growing county, why would we want to be known also as a county of racism? It is very hurtful, and it's something that I didn't think that I would see again in this lifetime. When we talk about what affects our tourism, and what affects our businesses, and what affects people coming to our county, and what affects our school systems here, nothing would affect it any more than that type of a label. We don't want to be labeled as a combat range, we don't want to be labeled when we talked about Second Amendment, but we don't mind being labeled as being racist. And I'm telling you, I don't support those actions, and I think I speak on behalf of the board, but right now, I'm speaking on behalf of Patricia Page, I don't tolerate it. There is no tolerance, and there's no place for it in this county, in our county, this is our county, and it will not be tolerated. Don't bring it to my attention if you don't want it to be addressed, I don't care if it's with, in your workplace, I don't care if it's in the schools, I don't care if it's at a public event in New Kent County, it will not be tolerated. And so, that's what I wanted to say about that, and I'm not even sorry for being emotional about it.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I think, I think you do speak for the board, I know you speak for me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Now, on another note, we have a celebration coming up, on Wednesday, January the fifteenth, in nineteen fifty-three, New Kent elected his first African-American after Reconstruction, and that was Samuel W. Woodson, I mean Crump. No, I was not here in nineteen fifty-three, however, I did have the opportunity to, to go to church as a kid, and also to know Mr. Crump as a young adult, and so they will have an unveiling for a historical marker, his family invites all to come out, it's at one o'clock on Wednesday, January the fifteenth, it's, the mark is already up and covered in front of the historical courthouse, so if you want to know what that is, that's what that is. It's been advertised on TV, and so the family plans for a reception here in the administrative boardroom afterwards, so we invite everyone to come, and with that, that, and I also want you to know that I am deeply honored to serve as chair for one year, as the Board of Supervisor Chair, and to know that I will make mistakes, and I will not try my best, but I will give my very best to the boards, to New Kent County, and all of its residents. So, if there are no other comments, we will have staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of items to bring before you for staff reports, and I am passing an Normally, in our budget process, we need one more. Normally, in our budget appropriation process, we carry a line item in our capital funds for special capital projects, we've not done that this year, and our decision is to, as things arrive, we'll bring them to you on an individual basis, instead of having you just approve a block group of funds, and not really getting to see the details of what that funding is spent for. I do have an appropriation request before you of thirty-one thousand dollars for four projects. The first project is courthouse HVAC design and engineering, we're having some serious issues with the existing HVAC system. We've just completed, and this is an issue that I've brought to you before, and had gotten authorization to proceed with the design and engineering, but as we put this out to bid for consultants, we were told the first thing that we should do is do a testing and balancing study, which that has been completed, and now we're ready to move forward to the design and engineering. The next item, and that's in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, the next item is painting in the courthouse, there is an area in the clerk's office that needs to be repainted, and we've identified some additional areas in the courthouse as far as the judges' chambers and some of the more public areas that also needs to be, be painted in the courthouse facility. That cost is eight thousand dollars. There's also a line item for safety item, safety audit improvements, we recently contracted with a third-party vendor to do an OSHA safety audit for the county, and they identified several items that needed to be addressed. The five thousand dollars is to address a structural item that was identified in this building here, downstairs in our, we call it the dungeon area, but in our, kind of the area that goes outside of our first floor, goes around our first floor, which is enclosed, a storage area that we have. Over time, as we've upgraded HVAC systems, there was ductwork that was done in a portion of that area, that now we don't have the proper clearance to meet OSHA standards. I believe the clearance from the floor to the ductwork probably is about five feet, and just about everybody has to bend down to go through. So, the five thousand dollars will allow us to block off that area, so that we can comply with OSHA standards. The next item, and the last item, is six thousand dollars, and this is for decks to be constructed at the Route six-eighteen trash transfer station. We've received complaints that there, our residents were having difficulty with the open-top containers, at least, especially with heavier items, trying to toss them over the top to get into the open-top container from the ground. So, what we proposed, and I've seen it at other trash transfer sites, is to build some decks, it would be two decks, and on each deck, there'd be two open-top containers on both sides, so you're not throwing things over the containers, you're actually higher up to just toss it in to the container.
So, they're gonna go upstairs to get up to the deck?
Yes, there, there, there will be stairs.
Are we gonna be pushed to do a ramp, or ADA compliance, or...
There, there is no ADA requirement, Americans Disability Act, a requirement to construct a ramp.
There is no requirement.
There is no.
Is that because we have other containers, correct?
That, 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 that is, because we have other containers, and ADA just doesn't address that type of, of operation. The total cost is thirty-one thousand dollars for those capital projects, special projects. And I've prepared a motion to transfer that money from our general capital fund line item to another capital fund line item that's dedicated towards general services projects.
Okay, we've heard the presentation from Mr. Hathaway, is there any discussion?
I did have one question, going back to the safety audit improvements.
Yes.
How are they gonna be blocking it off, Mr. Hathaway, are they gonna just put up a wall, or what are they doing to...
It's, it's kind of difficult to explain, just because the whole layout of that downstairs area is...
The reason you call it the dungeon.
Yes, but we would be putting up a gate on one end, and then the other end, where there is an existing door, we would be changing out that door as, as well. There's also a makeshift bridge that's been constructed in that area, which we will be removing that and constructing steps, and I'd be happy to show you the area, I'm sorry, I don't feel like I'm explaining it properly, but it's a weird space.
Chair, I have a question about that. So, will we be able to access it if we need it? That's why they're doing the gate, but it just won't be open for the general to...
Where, where the gate or divider is, it will present through traffic that would have to go under the ductwork. If you enter it from the other doorway, the existing doorway, you won't have to go under the ductwork, and that's the issue, having to go under the ductwork.
Any other discussion or questions? We have a motion.
I'm gonna change it just a little bit.
I knew it.
From Mr. Chairman. Madam Chairman, I move to appropriate the thirty-one thousand dollars from the capital fund line item to line item number three-one-four-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero dash four-four-eight-zero-two-zero to the fund the following projects, courthouse HVAC, courthouse painting, safety audit improvements, and the Route six-eighteen deck to the open containers.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
And Ms. Page.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway, you have anything else?
Madam Chair, I have one additional item, and passing down the resolution, that was requested late last week after we had put the packets together, and this is from Delegate Hodges' office. As you know, the General Assembly began last week, on January eighth. Part of our legislative agenda, we've requested that the General Assembly give us the authority to increase our transient occupancy tax from two percent up to five percent. Doesn't mean that, that doesn't obligate us to increase the tax, but it gives us state code authority to, to do so if we choose fit, which we'll look at during the budget process. We've asked Delegate Hodges to include us on a bill that he drafted for Middlesex County and Matthews County, which he has done, so the bill that he introduced includes New Kent, Middlesex, and Matthews, giving us the authority to... the authority to levy up to 5% transient occupancy tax. Delegate Hodges contacted my office late last week and asked that the board approve a resolution that will help him when he needs to present this to the body. He can say that all three localities that he's submitted this bill for has adopted a resolution in support of that.
Okay, is there any discussion on resolution R-12-20?
Yes, Madam Chairman, is this rate that we're talking about from 2% to 5%, is that kind of putting us in line with what other municipalities in the area are currently doing?
Well, all, all, by code, all localities have the authority to leviate 2% occupancy tax. Also, by code, there's about 30, and I haven't counted it, but it's probably between 30 and 40 localities that have this authority to levy up to a 5%. So we're almost at half of the counties. And state, cities and towns aren't included because they can charge whatever they want. They have no limitations. So already by state code, half of the counties in the state have the authority to levy up to 5%.
Mr. Hathaway, this money would be used to go to like the tourism board, right? I'll set some of the costs that we have on that.
By, by state code, any revenue that we collect over the 2% that we currently charge has to be spent on tourism activities. So we can't just put this to our general fund. It has to go to tourism. There's been discussions since we've rejoined Richmond Tourism that that, the funding would go towards our membership fee for Richmond Tourism.
Is that acceptable in that?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Are we ready for motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Evelyn?
I move to adopt Resolution R-12-20. Resolution to increase New Kent's transit occupancy tax from 2% to 5% pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1-3819.
You heard the motion. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
And that completes my staff report.
And do we have any other business? Is this now or later? The appointments?
Oh, yeah, appointments.
Okay. At this time, we'll have our appointments, and we'll have appointments delegated by district. Ms. Lockwood?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I will be stepping down from the New Kent Strategic Plan Steering Committee, so I would like to appoint my replacement. I will be appointing, I move to appoint Robert Jeremiah as District Five Representative for the New Kent Strategic Plan Steering Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, ending December 31, 2020.
Is that it? Mr. Steers?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I move to appoint Bobby Wagley as District Four Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a one-term, a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Evelyn?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I move to appoint Ron Dur as District One's Representative to the Broadband Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. I also move to appoint George Tate Jr. as District, District One's Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Mrs. Tiller?
Yes, I move to appoint Wayne Marks as District Two Representative to the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2023. Also move to appoint Kate Ferris as District Two's Representative to the Broadband Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. Also, I move to appoint Martha Eagle as District Two Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2023. And last, I move to appoint Edward B. Wood as District Two Representative to the Board of Road Reviewers to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. That's all.
Listen. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye. All right. Now we have appointments not delegated by district. Mr. Lockwood?
I do not have any.
Mr. Steers?
I do not have any.
Ms. Evelyn?
I do have them. I get this computer to work.
Okay. You want to see mine?
No, I got it. I move to appoint Mark Flynn as an at-large representative to the Broadband Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
Mr. Tiller?
I have none right now.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
There is one that they've requested be appointed, Sarah Richardson, to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Board, Williams Board, page 130.
Who's District? She's on the district.
It's not, it's not delegated by district. It's a, she's being asked to be appointed as an alternate member. To serve from January 1, 2020, December 31, 2024. Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Okay, now we have our regional boards and commissions. Mr. Lockwood, you're in for a treat. Mr. Lockwood? Mrs. Steers?
How are you?
Fine. Here we go.
I am not.
This is regional boards and commissions, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I move to appoint Thomas C. Tiller, or C. Thomas Tiller, as New Kent's Representative to the Planning and Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2021.
You guys have jumped to board staff appointments.
All right.
Not doing any regionals?
Don't think anybody had any, did they?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, regional boards.
Capital Policy Board. You want to do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent's Representative to the Capital Regional Policy Board to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. I move to appoint Rodney Hathaway as New Kent's Alternate Representative to the Capital Region Policy Board to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
Yeah, I will.
You still want to be PDC?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
I move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent's Representative to the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December, December 31, 2023.
Tourism.
Where is it? Oh, all right.
Madam Chair? Do you want to do that one?
Does anybody, I don't, does, Mr. Lockwood, do you want to be the alternate to that? Or, I mean?
Which one is that?
Richmond Regional Planning instead of Mr. Hathaway?
PDC.
Yep. Sure.
I move to appoint John Lockwood as New Kent's Alternate Representative to the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2023, I guess. Pull Mr. Hathaway's down if you want to be the alternate to the Capital Region as well.
Absolutely.
I'd pull, you're going to be the alternate to the Capital Region too? I can pull back my motion.
No, that's okay. I think Rodney will do just that.
I'll do tourism.
I moved, I moved to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent's Representative to the Richmond Regional Tourism Board, director to serve a three-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2022.
You mean to do the TPO again? I'll start if you don't want to do that.
I'm already on it, don't I?
It's got me down.
No, my term doesn't expire.
That's, you're alternate.
I'm an alternate.
No. Ms. Tiller?
Okay. I'll do an alternate.
Mrs. Tiller is not an alternate, I'm his alternate.
Do you want to change positions then?
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. I move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent Representative to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2023.
I have appointments.
You want to do make up the takeaways place?
I move to appoint C. Thomas Tiller as New Kent's Alternate to Richmond Regional Transportation Planner Organization to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, ending December 31, 2023. Also move to appoint John Lockwood to finish the term for the Central General Waste Management, ending December 31, 2023. I think we got them all. Ms. Watkins?
I saw we had a second alternate. Do we need to do that?
For, um...
Richmond Regional?
We have a.
Mr. Davis was the second alternate.
Yes, because I believe we get two votes on the TPO.
We do.
I'd be more than happy to nominate anybody who would like it.
Since I'm already an alternate, I can't be the second alternate, I guess.
Keep looking down this end. I hope you're looking at Steers.
It's the second alternate.
Ms. Page, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Your motion, the last one you made for Mr. Tiller?
Uh-huh.
Board was that?
It's for Richmond Transportation, the TPO. Transportation Planning.
And you appointed him as an alternate?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So you all want to think on your second alternate?
Where is that on there? I don't see a second alternate.
I move to appoint as New Kent's Second Alternate to Richmond.
There's not a first, so do...
Right under the one that you're...
Oh, the one that John just appointed, okay.
Mm-hmm. If it helps, we never need a second alternate.
That sounds good.
I'll do it, I mean.
I move to appoint Thomas Evelyn as New Kent's Second Alternate to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization to complete a four-year term ending December 31, 2022. That's got to be 2023, don't it?
If it's a four-year term, it's got to be 2023.
Well, it was held by Ray, so...
Yeah, it's a...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mrs. Page?
Aye. And then we have our board's staff appointments. Mr. Lockwood?
I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Steers?
I don't have any.
I move to appoint Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. I move to appoint Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. I move to appoint C. Thomas Tiller Jr. as the Board Representative to Planning and Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
Madam Chairman, I move to appoint Thomas Evelyn as the Board Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
Mr. Tiller, you have any?
Ron, you said you'd do the safety and transportation again?
Yeah, I'm sorry nominated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I get it.
Do we need somebody to take Ray's place on the Social Services Advisory Board?
Yep.
And, um...
I'll do that.
Yep, D.
Mr. Lockwood, does he want to?
He got two coming up.
I'll take that one for the Social Services Advisory Board.
I move to appoint C. Thomas Tiller as the Board Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
I move to appoint John Lockwood as Representative to the Historic Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and then December 31, 2020. Also move to appoint John Lockwood as the Board Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and then December 31, 2020. And we have one more, which is AFD. How often do they make?
Do what?
AFD. Is that a monthly meeting?
They make usually no more than two times a year. Their responsibility is to review the AFD applications and send the recommendations to the county commission. So usually spring, spring.
I'll do that.
You did it wrong? Okay.
It's all your fault.
You did it wrong? Okay. I move to, I move to appoint Ron Steers as Board Representative to the Agriculture and Forestry Division Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1, 2020, and then December 31, 2020. And I think that covers all of our appointments. All right. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Okay. So with that process, okay, now we'll move on for appointments for Director and Coordinator of Emergency for 2020.
Is it the chairman?
Oh. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint Patricia Page as a Director of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 44-146.19, as Director of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter 30-171.
And I move to appoint... And I move to appoint Rico Peck as the Coordinator of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia Section 44-1.46.19 and as Coordinator of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter 30-172. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
And at this time, we have a motion to avoid to close session.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A.1 of the Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of assignment, performance, and salaries involving employees of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Kind of a question. Is this something you have to go home and come back to?
No.
Madam Chair, you might wanna read that again. I don't think your mic was on if somebody wants to hear it in the public. Sorry about that. I was looking, Mr. Vaughn back there.
All right. Madam Chair, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A.1 of the Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of assignment, performance, and salaries involving employees of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
And we will be going to closed session before, we're going to closed session. We are in here. Before we go into closed session, we will have our three students to come up and take a picture. We will not be voting on any business when we come out of closed session. So with that being said, can I announce the meeting? Just to inform you that our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on February 10, 2020. And the next work session will be held at 9:00 AM on January 29, 2020. And both of them will be held here in the County Administrative Building Boardroom. And thank you for your attendance tonight. And again, if we could have our students come up for a picture, we appreciate it.